And city council tonight is Monday, September 24th, 2007. It's on or about 7:00 PM. And this evening, city council will be meeting in a series of four different committees, starting off with the environmental committee chaired by Paul Wile, member Wile.
Okay, this is start of the environment committee. We have litter control report from the solid waste and litter control officer and miscellaneous. It's Mike Gosnell who will give us a report. Sit down there or at the podium, your choice. And this is just to give us an update of what's been going on. He's been working for under six months, but about six months. And just to tell us the state of what the activities have been.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wile said, I've been in a position for just shy of six months. My six month stuff date will come up here in about another week and a half. So what do I do? Typically, what I do for this position is I patrol the city for and looking for trash and litter violations. That can be, you know, littered yard, trash cans left out after collection day, trash stored improperly on the side of the house, not in cans and whatever that is against the code. Another one of the aspects I look for is recycling that's been left out. Oftentimes recycling's left out, it's unsorted, the collection, the solid waste district doesn't pick it up because it's either contaminated with green glass trash or unsorted. So what I usually do is I go up to the house, the residents there, I contact them, knock on the door. If I can get in touch with them, I speak with them, let them know why I'm stopping, either for the litter complaint or litter violation, improper storage, or the recycling issues. If they're not in, I leave them a warning on their door. If the situation isn't resolved, I, they get a citation on their door. What works best in this position is when you actually, when I actually get to get in touch with people face to face. They actually get to see that somebody from the city is stopping at their house because of whatever situation, be it litter in the yard, even if it wasn't theirs. And that's one of the big things I've come across, especially in these really high density neighborhoods that have a lot of foot traffic, such as along Stewart Street, along Mill Street, down Congress. They've got a lot of people that just traverse through there and, you know, throw things out or stuff blows in their yard. People don't feel obligated to pick it up because they didn't generate it. A lot of these areas have people that haven't lived out on their own before. And so this face to face contact works really well with that. I get to actually say, oh yes, you know, this is your property, you are, you are the tenant here, you are the resident here, you know, this is your area to take care of. And that, that has a really good, really good outcome as far as the production out of them. They're made aware that these situations are important, that it is their responsibility, and they generally respond very well to it. I'm looking forward to the 18 inch rule that was just passed last month and is going to go into effect here soon. Getting, you know, looking forward to getting more of that information out there. It's going to help turn our, you know, litter issue from a private residential problem to, you know, more of a citywide problem, bring it out to light that, hey, this is a, this is a community problem. It'll make people take on the responsibility of the trash that spills out off their property and trash that blows, you know, right next to the property, right into the road. Before that was just up to the street department to take care of. And it kind of made the city, you know, look trashy, you know, as you see newspapers and cups and things in the street gutter. So hope, you know, looking forward to that. And that's going to be for businesses too. You know, I'm looking forward to businesses being responsible for the stuff that's in the street gutter right outside of their place. Once again, it makes it more of a, makes solving the trash and litter problem a community effort. All right. So as of, as of the last six months, I started in the spring, the spring quarter, when we have our, you know, populations high and we have a lot of activity going on outside and a lot of trash and litter issues getting created. I had over 600 violations in the spring that I went and addressed people about, actually almost 700. And I addressed those people. And most, most everyone, once you knock on the door, you talk to someone, they, they do take care of the situation. They do, it does get resolved. And that could be anything from somebody left their cans out overnight, never returned their cans after collection day, to somebody threw a party and had trash all over their yard, to, you know, somebody put their trash out earlier or had recycling setting out because it didn't get picked up. Over the summer, one of the issues I had to deal with was the move out. Everybody knows about move out and looks forward to the, you know, sees these piles of trash on the side of the road. After the May move out, it was about a two week period where people had moved out, people were coming in and cleaning tenant houses and people would move out and they'd leave trash on the curb, move, and then once again, cans would just lay there for days and days and days. Or, on the other hand, they would move out, leave all their trash pile on the side of the house, and it would sit there for days and days and days, and no one was taking care of that. I made many calls, many calls, contacted a lot of landlords on that when I saw the house was vacant, contacted 40, 50 landlords. And there was a couple of them that owned large amounts of property within the town and called them and told them why I was stopping, you know, house A, B, and C here that I checked on, I see they're owned by you, had a bunch of trash cans sitting out and they've been out for two days. And would you also check your other properties while you're out? And so that, and sure enough, within a day or two, I think all their properties, all the cans had been removed from the tree lawn and they were taken care of. So then his move in happened throughout the summer, people trickled in, we've got new, now we've got new people living in the town. They didn't live there before, so they've got, once again, you know, a different trash day they might not be familiar with, just the different regulations, how trash should be stored, how, you know, removing cans from the curb, how to recycle, maybe where they came from, they could recycle green glass. Well, everything's a little different, so it was a re-education time then. Any chance I get to knock on the door and talk to someone, I always go over any relevant rules that might be necessary to cover, such as, you know, storage and recycling regulations, what is and isn't acceptable. And that, that really worked well and you get to form a little rapport between the city and the citizens too out there. As summer went, it was fairly slow that way, I only stopped at about 425 places and heard about 25 citations. And fall, as fall came, another big rush of people all in, all in about a two week period. Similar issues to the summer with people not knowing the trash schedules, leaving things out, certainly a lot more party trash, you might call it, was generated and has been generated. And I had a lot more people just ignore warnings in the fall. And I think that's maybe a thing, it's new tenants, new people, as far as the, you know, having issues, people out of compliance. Most people know what to do, what is expected of them. But when you have new people moving in, sometimes they're not sure. They also haven't seen a bill they didn't pay show up on their utility bill either. So I think that may, that may get more response as soon as the first month's utility bills come in with unpaid citations on them. On that, I get, I get a pretty good response to people, pretty positive response when, when I'm out and get to talk with people face to face. Aside from that, aside from patrolling for litter, litter violations and, you know, trying to keep everybody in compliance with that, I've gotten involved with some other things. I've looked, looked up some information on the hazardous household waste collection that the city's going to try and do with Athens Hocking Recycling District. Looked up some information, contacted a woman from Fairfield Licking, Perry and Kachakin Solid Waste District. They've hosted some, some of these hazardous household waste collections. Got to pick her brain about a lot of things and see what worked with them, what didn't work, what issues they had, how to make things run smooth and got a lot of, a lot of really good information pointers off of her, what to expect, cost estimates and things like that. I usually spend anywhere from a minimum of two to maybe a maximum of five hours a month in meetings. I go to the neighborhood executive meetings, I get to get in touch with the, those citizens that are concerned with the neighborhood communities and those issues and talk with them. I also have been involved with Ohio University's Office of Off Campus Living and their CA program, that's the Community Assistance. Able to work with them, they're the people that are, they have students out in the neighborhoods, they're there to network between the students that are living off campus and the university and the city, just to be a go-between, to pass information back and forth. Developed some information based on trash collection days, acceptable materials for recycling, and just other trash and, trash and litter knowledge that they needed to have, put some flyers out and got those passed out to them through that program. We hosted a party training, you might call it, the block party training.
They need to be trained to have parties.
More responsibility training, you might call it, covering what is, what is, is expected of people that host a party. Usually we don't do that until spring, but it came up in the fall this year. And so we tried to encourage people that were going to partake in such activities to do it responsibly and let them know what is expected of them. So that's a pretty well, pretty well, a good, pretty good summary of what I've been involved with over the last six months, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Okay. Questions, Nancy?
Are you pretty convinced now that you have a process for returning cans to the backyard or will you have to call these landlords every year and remind them? Because it also happens at Thanksgiving time, you know, because the people leave and they leave before the trash is collected and they sit there. And it's an aggravation to the people who live in those close neighborhoods having those cans there for three or four weeks, as you might imagine.
No doubt, especially once they roll into the street.
Right, with the winds and so on, if we have wind there.
Well, I certainly can't say that I've developed a, a method for it and that the landlords expect me to call them. Since this is the first move out, this is the first time I've called them and I got a great response off them. And I, I think things look pretty good within a short period of time. If it happens again, I'm certainly willing to do that again. And if, maybe after two years, if they say, oh, that guy's going to call me.
I was hoping it was a vulnerability, yes.
Right.
That's what I was hoping you were going to say.
Yeah, so hopefully, you know, I'll do it again if that's what it takes. If they're not used to having somebody call them up on the phone, then they'll get used to it.
Jim?
I'm really impressed with the number of face to face meetings you've had with, with residents and landlords and all. And I'm pleased to hear how positive those have been. One of the issues that led us to look for your position, I think, was our desire for education mainly among the students who are coming into the neighborhoods to live. Education about garbage times, about noise ordinances, about all that stuff. I'm wondering if you have thought about, if you've got any ideas about how to deliver that message successfully, but in a, in a less time consuming way than face to face?
Well, yeah. The face to face I do when there is a problem. I don't, I don't go down the street knocking on doors just to talk to people. When I see, let's say they left the recycling out, it's a day after collection day, it's unsorted, I go up, I'll go up to the door then and say, hey, this is why, you know, you need to do this. I'll give them a sheet on recycling and talk to them about anything else that might be relevant, you know, maybe where they've got their trash stored or whatever. And as far as getting that information out to them ahead of time, I worked with the, with that Department of Off Campus Living.
Is that the pamphlet you were passing out?
Yeah, that was a pamphlet that passed out, and it went in their first quarterly newsletter, which was the first week of classes.
Okay.
So that, so that information was out there to those students. And they, the Office of Off Campus Living went around door to door, passing those out and offering recycling tubs to people.
Okay, good, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Carol?
I don't know about anyone else, but I'm noticing a difference. And certainly as I walk into town from down Congress, I, I see a difference. So I thank you, we thank you for your consistency. They know you're coming if they don't do the job, and they know you'll show back up if they don't get it done in the allotted time. So, great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a few. In terms of the, you said earlier that there seem to be more people not listening to the warnings. Have you, do you have a proportion ratio of warnings to citations? And do you have actually, in theory, we have an, an increasing rate each time for repeat violations or, and have any of those kicked in, one? And when does the clock re-check itself? Every September or do you know?
Oh, okay. As far as the, I don't have those numbers.
Offhand, no?
Yeah, put together quite that way right now.
Okay.
As far as repeat violations, I actually was just entering some data into spreadsheets. None to speak of. I have, there's one, one place.
Okay.
One house that's been consistently trashy. And there's, there's the code office that is handing out citations and doing, they can do this, police, police department's also been doing this. And I actually just got some of their citations today and logged them. And so I saw there was one house where I've been there and the police department's been there, so.
So in theory, they, they all add up. I mean, if code does one, police do one, and then you do one there somewhere at 60, I forget the, I forget the categorization.
Yeah, they're all stored on the same, they're all stored in the same database.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay.
But as far as the ratio, as far as compliance, after a warning, I think it's an insignificant amount, but a slight bit, like maybe before, maybe 5% I'd cite before, and now I'm up to about 8% maybe. But it's early, it's early. That may, you know, the numbers, the, the sample size is small, so that can be just a fluke.
Okay. And in terms of repeat offenders, when would you think the clock would, would recheck?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
Quarterly.
So in other words, you, okay, so if you have four or five violations from one house in a quarter, that's enough?
Yes. And that, because it is such a transient population and things do move on quarters, it seems.
Okay.
I mean, there, there is the, you know, nine months where things are pretty consistent, but people within there can sublease and move around, so.
Okay. And I know one of the aspects that was discussed when, when the hiring was being talked about was actually looking at the uptown solid waste arrangement. Have you had time to do that or is that still further down the line?
I've done some of that, not so much with the collection and the storage, but just some of the trash and litter in the areas up there, you know, more behind the buildings and such.
And I know it's, the last question, and actually I want to repeat what Carol said. I've heard several citizens, a lot of them were pedestrians who walk, because there's a lot of people walk around, see this stuff, saying it has improved, you know, so that's any walking around, they see less trash around. The last question is, I know it's a short time that you've been in there, is there anything we need to do as a legislative body to improve your job, so to speak?
Not that I can think of at this time. I think that 18 inch rule is going to help a lot because it's going to put that, that responsibility of things that spilled off of someone's property or even things that, just like if somebody's walking down the sidewalk, throws something in your yard, you're obligated to clean it up because it's, it's on your property. Now, it kind of does the same for, you know, your sidewalk and your, and the street gutter. And I think that's going to make things look a lot better. If you look down some of the roads, there was a big block party this past weekend on Congress Street, and you look down Congress Street and all along the street gutter, there's, you know, these plastic cups and papers and things that are lightweight and blow down the road, they get caught in the gutter. And it's nobody's responsibility except for the streets who would come by and take care of that.
Or all the storms or the sort of apartment.
Even worse, yes, or the storms who collect.
Any other questions? Jim?
Just a comment. I haven't, copy of an email. The Clean Committee is forming a Clean Downtown Subcommittee, which is meeting for the first time next week. I know, Mike, you probably got a copy, you're listed here. So that'll be, that first meeting will be Monday, the first, at 9:30 AM, downstairs Congress Room. And asking what city council can do, the, the goal of these meetings is to, again, make recommendations to council for some action. But there are people from the uptown area, residents, citizens, university representatives involved in this beginning room.
Okay. Debbie, did you have something?
Yeah. And also want to say, we appreciate the work that you're doing, and I am hearing really positive feedback from folks in the neighborhood associations and around town. I have a question about what you just said to Paul about resetting the fines quarterly. I don't know if it's stated that way in our code, and I think we should think about that because a big part of the reason that the fines increase each time is to really try to have that deterrent effect, that at some point it's going to be painful enough that they will deal with this. So I would want to think about whether there's a way for that to be an annual thing, and maybe we need to look at it in the ordinance itself.
Go ahead, sorry.
I was just, I don't think the code directly addresses the, anything like that, that's more policy.
To my knowledge, we don't really have any data. I mean, in theory, if you talk to most students, they're signing a year lease. And I know there's a certain amount of subleasing and turnover and can't get along with roommate type stuff. I don't know the percentage of people actually moving quarterly though. But that'd be an interesting number to find. I imagine code might have a, a little bit of a tweak on that, but I, I don't think it's a real high percentage. You know, what would you think, 20%, 30%? So a household of three, for instance, you'd get to the point where you say, okay, how much does that turnover happen?
So I want us to look into that a little bit more, I guess. And then the other question I had, you mentioned with the 18 inch rule enforcing that in the, in commercial areas as well, are you currently only doing residential areas or are you already dealing with some litter enforcement in commercial areas?
I generally stick to the residential areas. There's been just a few commercial areas that I've had to address.
Just because that's where the problems have been?
That's where most of the problems are, where most of the complaints are.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? One last question. How do people contact you if they want to report litter?
Ah, if somebody wants to report litter? There is a litter reporting form on the website, on the city website. That ends up going to the code office. That's just how it's wired, electrically routed now. And if they want to contact me, my phone number is 592-2222.
2222.
Yes.
All twos. Okay. Okay, thanks a lot there.
All right, thank you.
I don't have any miscellaneous. Does anybody else have miscellaneous?
I do.
Ah, Nancy has miscellaneous.
Thanks too, my friend.
Okay. And this has to do with the hazardous waste?
I was asked what.
Okay. What you did on your summer vacation?
Volunteer on Saturday at Knox County Hazardous Waste Day. There were some questions I heard people articulate, and I thought maybe it would help to see some of the things that they have now. I don't actually use a thing in the jig here. Okay. I was positioned at the gate, and I always thought maybe I could run for Knox County Commissioner because everybody was smiley then, but in a few feet, they weren't so smiley. There were a lot, many people that came, I don't have a final count on it yet, but this is how it looked, lots of tires and things in the back of the car. So take a look at that sheet of paper you have in front of you and see what they were taking up. It's kind of interesting, other than the fact that my digital camera's going to pop. They charge $5 a car, and if you got over five tires, they charged you more, a dollar a tire. So they had like two streams, it was at the fairgrounds, it was a beautiful sight, a beautiful day. I was the only one in the sun, I got too much sun, but here we go, let's see. This is the, there weren't many volunteers, here's the volunteer taking $5 per car, additional for tires, so they had to go in and count all the tires that were there. This may be too fancy for me. This is where you start to see my problem. But anyway, Sims Computer, Sims Recycling was taking all of the computers and putting them in a semi, and there were a lot of people walking in with that. You know, you sort of have the hardscrabble guy coming in with a bajillion tires kind of laced onto the car, and then you have the people who are from the local areas coming in with a little bit of lacquer and their old computer. And so this is probably not something we can do right away, but boy, this was, this would start us down the road of getting rid of those computers. I had people say, the schools are throwing like computers in the dumpsters, that's terrible, all those potential hazardous waste materials. And so this is how it looked as you came around the bend. Knox County has a fabulous fairground, but you, you can see that there wasn't, at least at this point, any long line. Actually, if you went up the hill, you'd see a pile of tires that would probably make you cry. But there you are. Here's the next, this is one thing that I heard people talk about is potential leaks and the ground, ground was totally covered with an impervious surface. So there was, you know, really they were taking care of it. That's not all that was happening. There's, you can see on the next slide, they were, sheriff was actually collecting ammo. And let's see what else was going on. We probably wouldn't do that one because we're starting out. But you can see, there's the ground cover and there's the drums. Those of you are familiar with lab cleanouts? I mean, anybody who's been around OU knows the kitty litter and the drums, and this is what they were doing with the hazardous materials, at least the initial amount. You can again see that ground cover, nothing was going to go through that. And all the people there are working not, they're not volunteers, those are all people from Clean Harbors, which would not be my favorite place. I mean, you know, it's a company that does all kinds of things. This woman's kids go to OU. And anyway, there's the paint compressor, if you brought in oil paint, they don't take anything but that. They were smacking it down into little pieces, and then they were going to take it, I think, to the incinerator in Akron. But notice she has, has on specialized garb, working hard to put her kids through OU. She has Tyvek coveralls and special gloves, and they're very careful. And there were probably 25 to 30 people in this, in this particular unit that were working. Wish my camera hadn't gotten so bad. Then we have the tires. They had seven semis full of tires. Now, I cannot see us generating that in the city, and this is one of the big problems I see in the future on this. What are we going to do about tires? They were taking these right to Columbus, I mean, you've never seen anything as amazing as two of these big semis just rolling down the street from the fairgrounds, just jammed to the gills with tires. Amazing to see. And I think we're, I'm done. So Clean, they had Clean Harbors bid the project, and the guy who was in charge of it, they have one in each county, and you can see the handout that they did. People were talking about publicizing it, I'm not sure it's something that has to happen because they sent it out maybe with their utility bills, and you can see how, how it worked in that particular case. So thank you for giving it to Bill. Thank you very much for that. But you can see, we probably can't do anything as grand as this. I don't think we should take tires unless the county's in with us because that's where they're going to all come from. You would be amazed at the tires. And you can, you can see what, what the situation is. $5 per car, $10 for a large pickup, and then the first 10 tires were free, after that it was a dollar a tire. It was a farm tractor tire, and Knox County is maybe the same size as Athens County without the students. And there are a lot more farmers because it's a more farming area, so there are a lot of tractor tires coming through. And the people with the tires were not too excited about it. But anyway, there were some things that were unacceptable, as you can see. They're going to have a appliance roundup later on. They hold one of these in each of the counties, and you can see how it went. Anyway, decided I was going to go and see how, all it did was make me afraid. That's what I, bottom line, I'm concerned.
Afraid of what, the cost?
Yeah, the cost and the way it'll go. I mean, I hate to say it, and I know you don't want to hear me say that, but I just did. You know, it's just the whole idea, especially the tires. The tires were really scary from my, from my point of view. Just standing there and watching them, come on. Doesn't take very many volunteers, it's almost all run by the, by the corporation that, that is in charge. Anybody else? Anybody have any questions or ideas?
I have a question. So 70,000 for just the county alone?
Yep. The city and the county, it's mom's running and Frederickton and, yeah. And all the solid waste district people were there because it's a four county district.
So the question arises, what do you think the cost of that 70,000 is above what they charge for the tires? And I guess I'm trying to ask what, we're not going to probably collect that tires or that many tires. We covered...
This is the fourth or fifth time they've had it, I think.
Yeah, so it should be down pretty low.
It should be down, yes. And I think it's, it's one of those things where we really need the county to buy in with us, I think.
Okay, but we're talking about a citywide and we only put together 15,000, so.
Right. It's frightening.
This doesn't sound like it's going to fly, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know, I just think we can't do tires. I mean, I just don't see the tires. Maybe the three of us, I mean, if we had been, you know, when we talked about it, we got a pretty clear idea of what we were doing. I don't know if we had tires in our mix.
I think we might be surprised at the number of people that have tires, city people.
Who doesn't have a couple in their drawers, you know?
I don't.
You're lucky.
What'd you do with them?
Sell them. When they, when they give me a new one, I give them back.
They're in the back.
I mean, it's just like, they're mosquito hazards.
What's that big tire pile in your backyard?[1759.12]
I don't think I have one.
Okay, I know we're still on track for trying to do this.
Okay. Just watch the tires.
Okay, tires, probably no ammunition. I see, uh, prescription medicines here. That was brought up to me at a, a meeting yesterday about how to dispose of that. That's unacceptable, I see.
I don't think you can do it.
No, I don't think so either. Uh, there, there should be a way to deal with that. And they're just talking about oil-based paints and not latex, I see.
No latex. It was pretty amazing to see. It was very well done. They have it down to a science. But, you know, people are still snarly about having to pay $5.
Okay, uh, we're not char- we wouldn't in theory be charging. Should we think about charging $5 a car?
Well, that's for you and the committee to talk about. I just thought I'd tell you what I found out, going to Mount Vernon.
Thank you for the, uh, your field trip there. It's great.
Yes, you're welcome.
Anything else on miscellaneous for Environment Committee? No? Okay. So, City Services next.
Okay, we're going to City Services, and I just managed to bury my agenda. Okay, where is it? I handed you a couple of things. First of all, I have this summit at Coats Run, and that was the bridge, and Debbie asked me to put it on my agenda, and we don't have the additional information. But one thing I was interested in is in 270204, or 270203, it says, "Point at which runoff will be calculated." I guess I was wondering, and I asked Ray about it, and he gave me this, and he said, "Oh, well, of course, this was all changed by the Burgess and Nyponne. So, I'm going to give this back to him and tell him he can use it for a doorstop in his office, instead of me using it for one in mine." But, um, the stormwater control, it says that, um, stormwater develop, runoff from development areas of five acres or more shall be restricted so that development does not increase peak runoff rates. And I was wondering, people were asking after we had our discussion about this bridge, how much water would be going down, you know, would be coming down the hill. So, maybe when we get to that point, we could find out what they guesstimate. Our experience when we were doing the subdivision at Oakmont before your time, Ray, was that the engineers would make wild assumptions about the surface the water was going to run over. And, you know, we had to kind of ask, you know, especially the older ones, you know, who hadn't been, who hadn't thought about, "Well, it's not exactly that kind of surface," and so, just, you know, just to see what might happen. I also asked a couple of people who were, um, who were involved, and they still hadn't gotten those letters from the developer.
Yeah, I haven't received any other information back then yet, but we requested to use that.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Do you want, uh, Chad is, um, interested in making a comment on it. All right. Three minutes, Chad. He was in watching us before, so...
I'm going to pass around, uh, some maps of the area. Because what might be concerning, well, I'm sort of concerned about the Coats Run area. The Danes property, um, has a bunch of Adena mounds on it. Used to have some old trees. There's still a few trees there. Uh, there's still burial mounds there. Uh, these are Adena Native American mounds, and they certainly should not be harmed. And in addition, where they want to put these 300,000 cubic yards of, of dirt is on the south portion of the ridges, behind the dairy barn for future development. That is totally wrong. It's in violation of numerous laws. One of the laws is the, the House Bill 576 passed in 1988 under the 117th, uh, Ohio General Assembly granting the land to OU, which requires that they have a ridges advisory committee, which last met in 1991, because we packed that meeting with people opposed to the development, and OU effectively disbanded the meeting in violation of the law, which requires the ridges advisory committee to be in place for all uses of the ridges land. This is a new use. It was not considered back in 1991. The Ohio Attorney General's Office is beginning an investigation of OU. They have requested documents of, from John Burns. There should also be a 401 permit required under the Army Corps of Engineers and the Ohio EPA, because they want to fill in stream valleys. It's in violation of the Clean Water Act. Unless they get a 401 permit, the Attorney General's Office is also investigating this, as is the Ohio EPA. And, uh, this should be in consideration before the city grants a permit to move this dirt that would destroy the ridges. Additionally, there is more than 20 meetings of the OU Subcommittee of the Energy and Ecology Committee, which includes administrators and faculty as well as students. And they came up with a land use plan that I just passed out that calls for the preservation of the area they want to destroy for low-impact recreation. You can see on the map. I can give you a bigger copy of it. Uh, it's in the, I just published a book, Against All Odds, The Struggle to Save the Ridges, my third book, showing the massive community support for preserving this area. And I do hope City Council can intervene and stop this development and stop this destruction of the ridges. It's certainly against the law and against the will of the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad. Um, okay, on to my next agenda items. We have had precious little input. I have to say that. All right. So, um, the first thing on my agenda is the sewer fund. And I know some of you have talked about INI and the need to marshal our forces on that. I have given you, uh, an ordinance proposal to raise the rates, raise the rates, isn't that? Raise the rates one more time. 6% across the board in anticipation of, um, first of all, taking care of some problems. And I have to admit, I've been, I just got a folder, and I'm going to start working through it. And, and also, um, to avoid the problems that we had with the Fern Alley Sewer, where we are going back and paying again to, to connect people that didn't connect the first time through. And, uh, the second one would be, um, to have an, and use the money, part of the money, the reason for the extra 3% is to put in an engineer, reconfigure and put in an engineer. And so, um, uh, the Third Street Sewer, another one of those things, you know, to have somebody that's there on the, on the site, looking at it all the time to avoid any more experiences such as the one we've just had. Okay, so we have, uh, uh, you have in front of you, well, 3405. And, um, I've got, um, a proposal to increase it by, um, 6%. And it looks like I made a mistake on the first one already. Cheapers creepers. 359, I don't know where, I covered it up. Let me go back and check and see what I did wrong. Wouldn't be the first time. Oh, yeah, I, okay, it's 309, and we would increase it by 6%. And, um, it wouldn't go to 381. 6% is about 20 cents there. And, um, 350, 6% on the base, and then 386, 6% on the base. And then the monthly base charge for the, for the usage, $10.30, 6% of that. And, um, that would go up to 108, 1092. You can see it's a relatively modest amount of money, about a dollar a month. And we may have to do a corrective action in June, but we'll see how this goes along with some other things that are going on. $20.60 for, um, the rate charge on the second one. And as you can see, it goes down. I did make a mistake, I have to say, on, on the, um, very first one. Which is great. You probably trust me like everything now. And so, I'm sorry about that. Uh, 22 cents. It should be somewhere in the vicinity of $3.30, some, with some change, to change. And the idea would be to try and pull together enough money and tweak some. The new mayor, we're going to try, I hope I, we can convince him to, to, um, hire a city engineer to do our inspections, look out for us, not to do Burgess and Nyponne type work, but to just watch so we don't have any more disasters. And we also have some things we have to pay for. And, um, I think some of us are trying to figure out the, um, what we still owe money on, how much we owe, and so on. Kathy's been working on a spreadsheet for that. But I'd like to get it started. Anybody have any problems with this? Right now, our sewers rates are about 12, 1, 25% more than our water rates. I mean, they've always been more. I mean, because we are still paying off the initial Clean Water Act effort. So, we built vacuum-assisted sludge drying beds. They're gone, but we're still paying the debt on them. And then we had some sludge cookers. We borrowed money. Those are gone, but we're still paying. You know, for, for technology that was attempted to solve our problems. And so, we have, you know, a huge amount of debt. You've heard this before. This is not news. Um, we're going to work toward getting INI. As many of you know, we don't want to increase the size of our plant any more than it is if we don't have to. We don't need the extra water through there, and that will be. And so, basically, this is the proposal. Do you have any ideas or questions? We can, I can see if I can get it right on the first thing out of the... My only excuse is for both of these, I was using Office 2007. That's my excuse, and I'm sticking to it. Yes?
Um, this is, I don't know if it's exactly a question, but I think we've talked about dealing with INI a number of times. And I, I think it's a really worthy goal and something that we should invest in, because it's going to extend the, the life and the, the working capacity of our plant, so that we don't have to be, you know, increasing that. It'll help us not be treating stormwater. But I guess I would feel more comfortable with this if we had a clear plan that was going to say that we would inspect and, and fix INI problems in, you know, some portion of the existing sewer every year. You know, some, some way that, instead of just talking about it and passing the rate increase, that, that it actually has tied to it, a plan on dealing with INI.
A performance standard? It makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Nancy, so, um, a couple of things. First of all, this is, you really just re-pasted the ordinance 13405. So, this was actually, the last increase was in January of 2006. And this will increase in December of 2007, so it's about a two-year period, right? Okay. And, um, you don't have a clear, do we have a clear idea of what our sewer fund debt is right now? I mean, it's nice to say we're going to start improving things, but are we talking about paying off the debt?
I'll be able to tell you by the time we read it for the first time. And the other thing I'd like to make sure we put in there is something the mayor suggested, and I thought it was already done. And that would be a section, which is also in this one. The auditor is hereby requested to receipt all tab fee receipts into the sewer loan payment fund. Because I understand there's some issue with that, and who gets to do it? Well, okay. Let's just say we're going to do it, and then it's clear to the next, uh, person that is in charge. Okay? I know Ray's can do it. Kathy said we, she wants us to do it, so we'll have the best of both worlds. We'll get it done. Anybody else?
Where was it going if it wasn't going to?
It's probably sitting in the unappropriated balance. Okay.
We just renamed that fund for, well, that water fund.
That water fund.
But we have a sewer debt fund, but we don't, it, that percentage that we take off, the utility bills goes in there, but the transfers from FEMA, you know, revenue funds don't match the expense funds. And so, it just goes into, as you said, the unappropriated balance, and then these big projects come up, and the money's there and it gets used. Can I just, I want to make sure. Did I not give everyone a debt schedule with that information you requested? Was that in your packet from the stuff that you asked for?
You gave me one. I think it's on, sitting on my desk.
Meaning, can I start?
But if, you know, if we have it in time, so we know, because we are carrying a huge amount of debt. Many of, much of the debt is for improvements that we were forced to make to be in compliance with the Clean Water Act. And I mean, I think that's a laudable goal. I mean, we, and we tried some technology that just didn't work. And we're still paying for it, and we'll be paying for it for many more years. Because nobody knew what technology was needed. Any other questions? You all stunned? No? Okay.
One of the things that I've been thinking about is to try to, and I've asked our lawn council to try to find a consultant that would be a disinterested third party, so to speak. And they've raised a recommendation of someone to come in and look at what our debt schedule is, what our revenue and expenses are, and project out over the next five years at least, what, what should we be charging rate-wise, and then what? Because in 2011 is when, I think, 300-plus thousand dollars' worth of our debt goes off the books. It finally gets paid for. Uh, and then in 2013, another portion of it comes out. So, I think that, we haven't done this probably for 15 years, where we've had an outside consultant come in and take a look at sewer and what our debt is and what we'd be comfortable with. We've always just relied upon our annual reports to OWDA, to services as that. But it might be nice to get somebody that's disinterested out, do it. I could make some phone calls and try to get a cost or give council, you, you a name that Dennis recommended and take a look at it.
How much are we talking about, Mayor Abel?
Pardon?
How much?
Don't know, because I have not called him. I don't want to talk to council first.
Ching, 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 lots of money.
No, this is someone he recommended, who is a former, uh, employee of the Dayton, Ohio, and, uh, was with their water and sewer division, and has now...
Finance director, and this is what he does now, as a disinterested third party and no politics.
You know, I, I imagine that if there could be a, a series of things done, maybe we could consolidate, as I think Sarah did.
Yeah, she did a malfe, a defeasance of, of an issue. It's still there in, in the books, so that... But that was because, you know, the high interest rate. And a couple of these have a little higher interest rate. But we are at least within four years of starting debt paydowns, just like, I think, January 1 was the final paydown in, of an OWDA loan in the Water Department. So, we are in a situation where we won't have that 70, $80,000 every year going out for debt, but it's $800,000 in the sewer fund.
Well, yeah, that was one of the questions I was going to try and make a table and ask Kathy about, because it seemed to me like there were a lot of 200,000s, and it seemed like the debt shouldn't have had that much of a, you know, so I'd like to know, I, I'd like to clarify for my own self how much we owe and what the annual payments are and when. But that's another matter.
Yeah, the OWDA is about 685 to 90,000. That's, that schedules real close. The others are all notes that we make a decision each year as to how much can we pay off in addition to the interest on it. Uh, and what I'm thinking is, rather than doing that way, maybe if we have somebody from the outside look at it, everybody can have a five-year or at least that long until we start getting to the point where OWDA starts being paid off. And that changes the complexion, but, uh, who knows what condition the overall system is going to be in, because you also have to, council have to give some guidance as to what do you want to put away for improvements to the system, whether that be elimination of INI or, or other, uh, pumps or other problems that, you know, that you could have. Plant's in pretty good shape. We just did a $2.4 million renovation to it. But a lot of the lines, I mean, we're, we're getting rid of, you know, Columbus Road gets rid of the worst pump station that we had, uh, situation. But, uh, which we felt had a lot of INI in.
One of the things that I think a lot of people are interested in, we seem to have a pretty decent street plan, but we don't have much in water and sewer. I mean, I don't know if it's the nature of the personnel or what, but, um, I think that's one thing that we would like to see. I mean, that's what other people would say.
Well, part of it too is just because you can't, we can't inspect it all in the same manner, because you have to run camera through with a very lean-sized lines, and usually those are done by...
We bought a camera.
Well, but it only goes in, basically, residential lines, so that if we...
I'm just teasing.
And if they're having too much of a backup problem in their hounds or something, we're able to camera that and be able to see if it's an INI problem, or if there's, if it's on the property owner's section of it or the city's section of it, that the problem is existing. And that's why we got that one. But when you start talking eight-inch lines and 12-inch sewer lines, I mean, that camera that goes through the other is not really the right one. Last one we had done was in Court Street, uh, and that was an outside firm had to come in to do it. Took about two days, but we at least identified some things.
Yeah, I think, you know, in addition to the INI question, there was that question about a plan. So, it's something to work toward, and, um, I guess we can talk in a while about the, the, find out how much the cost would be, if you would, and get that to me. I mean, how much is going to charge us to, if there's something we can do? And while we're on the topic of sewer, there's another problem. I guess I was wondering, having, since we're still paying for the relief sewer that goes by Baker Center, there are some pictures that people sent concerning changing the elevation of manholes and, um...
I think Ray's aware of them.
Ray's aware of those? And I guess that, you know, I wonder why, with us spending millions of dollars on this sewer, these guys are tricking around with something that was designed at, by an engineer and paid for. I mean, you know, and who gave them permission to do it? Does EPA know they're doing this, or what? Well, it looks like somebody better do something about it, because it's not, you know, it's not for, I mean, given the, our problem with manholes in the past, it's, concerns me that they would be changing the height of the manholes. This is the same place where students were doing the, um, we're talking about, um, the area to the upstream from Baker Center, if you know upstream. And, um, where we had the big spills in the Ameritai Pond. No, I'm an Ameritai. I guess I have to be worried about it.
Theoretically, this could become a low elevation in that area of the system. So, they shift the problem from one place to another. We just found out about it, and I got a, basically, I got a photo from Paul.
Yeah, Paul was out looking around, trying to figure out what on earth they were doing.
I was just walking by, and there's a big hole there. I was just walking by, and there's a big hole there.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like it, it's not something we should, that should, they should be doing to our system.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like they should, they, whoever they are, should be doing a better job of talking to us. I'm glad you're on it. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else on sewer lines? My favorite topic. Okay, next thing is fire alarms. Here we are, still doing fire alarms. I gave you a handout last year about this time. I talked with the two chiefs, because they were saying to me, "Oh, we just collected the money for fire alarms." And I, you know, I, and they came up with a plan. Chief Mayor, I think, wrote it up. He's really good at doing that kind of thing. We came up with a plan where we would not penalize people who don't have problems with those folks that don't have fire alarms, that have fire alarms that are malfunctioning. If they don't take care of them, they're gonna start to pay. That was the motivation. So, um, having said that, um, we sent out, as you can see, alarm totals and comparisons. And I'd like to thank Debbie Cleary for giving this to me and for Ray's office for assembling the information. We have 25 alarms, as you can see, in the police department. Of those, 16 were false. And, um, they billed about $2,600 in August. And then the fire alarms, 21 false alarms, and 11 were to Ohio University, and they billed $3,600. Now, I think the chief sent a note, and he was pretty modest in his assessment. He says it costs about $900 for a fire run. And I, I appreciate him doing that. That would be the fire chief that did it. Um, the police chief, you could see, would be slightly less expensive, uh, you know, not as costly. Okay, so we're in a conundrum here, because here we are accruing, if you take 21 times 900, that's enough to buy almost half the firemen. And, um, well, maybe not. I exaggerate. But a third of a fireman? 25% of one? I mean, you know, we're talking about real dough here. We're not talking about the guys in the station, but when, in some of these cases, when they're in a building that could potentially have large numbers of people, they don't take a chance. They do an all-call, which means we're paying overtime. This is real money, folks. This is not the play money. This is not monopoly money. And so we, it seems to me that we have to do something about this. And I don't know if, um, we should write a letter to the Attorney General saying, "Hey, we're Democrats too, and we want this resolved." I'm joking. But what should we do? I mean, what do you wanna do? Maybe I shouldn't be doing it, since I seem to be loosely associated, very loosely these days, with the institution. But, I mean, it seems to me that if you have false alarms, somebody oughta pay, at least, at least, University Courtyard. How dare they not pay that money? Yeah, they owe $6,000.
What about the one above University Courtyard?
Well, I know, university. Yeah, I know. Why are-
And they haven't paid anything?
I don't think so.
That's ridiculous.
Well, I know. Well, so here we are with the fire alarm problem. It's been in the paper. And I, I don't know if anybody has a solution. The administration wants to weigh in on this. I don't know.
Well, the, the situation with the high universities with all state agencies, state law doesn't permit us municipality to do that kind of a fine. And they've got an Attorney General's opinion that goes back probably 50 to 100 years of, uh, past precedent on it. So we can't collect from any state agency on the, this type of an alarm system malfunction.
If, um, if, but I, the situation is such that if we talk to them for, ask them for a formal opinion, would we get the same thing, do you think?
I've got an informal opinion. You could, I'll-
Well, I know, but I, I mean, we could go formal, couldn't we? Black tie, all that stuff. Why not?
Well, we did that about the ethics, too, and that didn't work out too well.
I know. Well-
But-
It all depends how it gets enforced, doesn't it?
Yeah.
What are we gonna do? I mean, I just, we can't not serve. I mean, we get a pittance from them for impacted cities. And it would eat up all of this. So, anybody, any ideas?
Yeah.
Shame them?
You can't not.
Should we, should we shame?
Yeah, that carries a long way.
That'll work, yeah. That'll work. Okay. Oh, any other good ideas?
We have no shame.
Yeah, that's true.
Who's the they?
Well, I think the thing that you have to do is to ask for something and get some legislative relief from the standpoint of looking at what, a large part of what we do is coming up. We, is the next truck to be replaced is the tower truck. And we're not talking 400,000. We're talking over a million here. Uh, and that's a large burden for the city to bear. But if you start now, and, and we've had some discussions with them to say, because Kent, Ohio, and Kent State did this some years ago, where they purchased a fire truck for the city of Kent through their capital improvement bills, et cetera. Because they could prove, and this is where we're gathering data and trying to prove, that we make a significant amount of runs to the university. There's 256 buildings, I think, on the campus at Ohio University. None of them are paying property taxes to the city. Uh, we document, you know, very well that, I mean, because our runs are not just to residents' lives. I mean, and what happens is they have so many alarm systems over there that some of them are old and some of them are new. You know, and when I talked to the fire chief last week, I asked how many fire runs has they made to Adams Hall so far, because it's a new system. Well, they haven't made any. Uh, it's a new system, and maybe they got it working right to begin with. But he also related, five days in a row, we went to Stocker, uh, a year or so ago, and it was the same detector that was going off five days in a row. Uh, and they finally replaced it, and we stopped going there. Uh, so we need that kind of cooperation, and the university has pledged, at least in their letters, and I believe Ray had a meeting, and they pledged again with it Friday.
Yeah, the fire chief and I met with their open safety, uh, administrative personnel, and we had a follow-up meeting scheduled. But we're trying to, in the interim, regardless of what happens with the legal side of this whole thing, we're trying to attack the root of the problem, which is any issues with faulty alarm systems or training of personnel, those kinds of issues that result in unjustified false alarm.
But other people have paid substantial amounts of money and got their alarms in order. And, you know, what are we gonna do?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why I wanted to bring it to council's attention, because one of the fears back then, when council was adopting this about a year ago, was what happens if Ohio University does not pay? And now we have the track record, and we know that they have no intention of paying for it. So do we continue to charge the rest of the community that are not state agencies? River Park Towers is, you know, makes your list as owing over 1,000 and paying over 1,000. So, uh, they're, they're in the process. We have received at least a little bit of $100 pittance so far from University Courtyard, but I'm not sure how long some of those last. But the others on that are, you know, they're law-abiding and they're, you know, paying those things. But I think the, the other worry of it is, is that, and I've talked to, to residents, residents is, that, you know, they leave for the summer. Well, do they leave their alarm system on, or do they shut down part of it that's been, like the motion detectors or, or some part of it? Because, you know, part of our fine system in there is, does the cardholder, the person that has the key to shut off the alarms and everything, well, they, you know, they respond. And that's one of the lines you have there with the, you know, no key holder response. Well, if you're gone for three months, whether it's the wintertime or the summer, obviously, who do you get to do that for you? Because you're gonna drive back maybe a few hundred miles. Uh, it's impractical.
Yeah. So anybody wanna hop in on this deal, again?
I, it seems to me, if there is a specific exemption for state institutions, that's one issue. These other people who have alarms, alarm systems, whether they're individuals or businesses, if it's costing all of the taxpayers a lot of money to respond to false alarms, I think they've got an obligation to repair their systems. And if they're gonna be gone for several months, you know, leave the thing with somebody who's gonna be responsible. I, I just don't know how else, because it's not fair for the taxpayers across the city to have to pay for that.
Um, I was under the impression that anybody who has a large system has to pay a permit fee. Is that the case?
No, we, that ordinance dealt away with, did away with the permit fee. It does have a, a, a fine if you've not registered it with the city. Can we then get one, get a call in, and it's sort of a automatic alarm system, then where there's a fine involved? And they thus, then register, but there's no fee for registering.
Okay. Um, in terms of, of most of these, uh, automated system were malicious false alarms. I guess, I'm asking, is it a person who pulls the thing, or is it just a faulty detector?
Well, it's, it's usually faulty detector, because most of the time, if they can prove that it was, if we knew it was a pulled alarm, you, you know an alarm was pulled.
Okay.
You aren't gonna charge that as a false alarm, because somebody had to do it. Uh, so those get as malicious, well, it's a whole different penalty for that if we can catch somebody. Uh, so they're not included in the false alarms. This is where, you know, you can have the situation, hairspray can trigger a fire alarm. You can have, uh, motion detectors or a door that's slightly loose, and a 40 mile an hour wind can lose contact with it that will then activate the alarm system. Uh, and most of these alarm systems ring into a service company who then, you know, follow your instructions. They do, they notify the, what we call the, you know, the key, key holder, and then first, and then they make a decision as to whether or not to continue that and call it in. I mean, and part of that is, you know, some of the newer alarms, like in, um, No Street Village, they had a situation where one of them was tripping off because it was getting impacted by the steam from the bathroom. And so they set, they were able to set it so that if none of the others in that area went off within so many seconds, it would cancel out that, and our alarms would do down quickly. It's all how you operate.
Do this, does the fire department have the, um, authority to extract a faulty fire alarm? In other words, if it was tripping over and over again, could the fire mar, uh, fire chief go in, extract that fire alarm, say, "This is broken"? Um, subterranean, of course, you probably have to evacuate the building, because it would no longer be safe. But is this a technique rather than finding?
I don't think the fire department is willing to take that liability risk, because quite honestly, if you've said, "Oh, we're gonna ignore this, or we're gonna take it out," and then something really happens and-
Well, if you-
Something is hurt, then, you know, is there a liability situation?
If you take it out and declare the building unsafe, it's not a liability situation anymore, nor is it a fine.
Well, I wish you luck in court.
I'm just asking, uh, I'm trying to take out the box here.
Because that's my biggest fear, is it, and, and it's the same one, that, that the fire chief has expressed many times, is do you leave a faulty system there just in case something real happens and live with it and try to get them to, to fix it? A good example of that was the high university end a couple of years ago. They were having troubles with their system. We were going there almost daily. I was there for lunch one day, and the alarms went off, and the staff in the dining room said, "Oh, we've been having trouble with that. We'll check it out and let you know if there's a problem." And we continued to eat, and nothing happened about it. I said hi to the firemen in front of Bobby. But I wasn't there three or so days later, and there was a fire in the basement area. The alarms went off, they followed the same policy, but there was a real fire. Well, if you didn't have that faulty alarm system working, because maybe it's only faulty in one area, and who wants to run that kind of risk?
I-
Nobody.
I guess the reason why I'm asking, because I was, um, many years ago, I think I was told by the fire, the police department that the fire marshal actually has more power to clear a bar than a policeman, and-
From an overcrowding standpoint, yes.
From an overcrowded standpoint.
And where it finishes the score.
Or an unsafe standpoint. So in theory, if you were to say, "This building is unsafe. We must have it cleared now until it's fixed." That's not a fi, that's not a fine, but it would be a fix.
Certainly something's-
I could ask him, ask the chief to clarify that.
I guess I'll have to. Okay. I, I'm just trying to think of how to make this work here. I mean, to how to get either a working system or less money spent.
Okay, so, I'm going on to Carol. Um, it seems to me that part of the reason that we approached this to begin with was to try to just get one little part of the whole picture tightened up. And I hope that, that Ray, in, uh, these meetings, you know, perhaps working on the bigger question of, I know Ohio University wants great fire protection. They want us to be able to provide that. And I, I think the possibility of a fire truck or having a station on campus that, that they, uh, provide, you know, some of those things might be possible. Or an ongoing, um, payment. I know their budget's tight too. We all know that. But, uh, this is something that's too important to Ohio University, and certainly to the parents of students, that I, I think that there's a strong possibility that we could continue to work from that point of view, that we have to solve this together. It's not a us and them.
Yeah. One, one other additional comment before we go back to Paul, and that was to say that we did afford both chiefs considerable discretion, because they had an opinion about how to enforce it. I mean, we did not, not, you know, just ratchet it down so they had to do what we said. Instead, we used their expertise to do the charging, because at a certain point, you have to trust them. What do we know? You know, and, and I think that's what we were trying to do. So, I mean, I, I feel pretty confident that if the chiefs decided that this was a problem, that, you know, maybe you need to impart that. It wasn't just, "Oh, you had one, so therefore we're gonna charge you." It was that the chiefs did that. And the other thing is, I don't see how University Courtyard can possibly, even though they have the name university, can claim that they don't have an obligation to pay those calls. If they're having a police officer come up because somebody hit the panic button, then that police officer is not in the neighborhood. The police officer is not on Court Street, and it is something that they are responsible for. They advertise that it's wonderful, and yet they're not paying the true cost, which is $6,000 or some dollars. So I think that's, that's another place. They are not Ohio University, and they owe us. And I'd like to see that money collected, if we could.
Since the police chief and the fire chief are the ones that basically decided how the fines would be assessed, yeah.
If they feel that they are, um, OU property, then why is the, has this police going up there? Why aren't the OU police going up there?
Oh, a very good question.
Um, and the other-
Because it's wired into our work.
These times are rewired, yeah, which is another thing entirely.
Well, there you go. Go for it.
The other, and I, I wanna say, I haven't worked at the university for, for about 26 years. Whenever there has been a fire alarm, and these things would trip once in a while, the fire department's been there amazingly fast. I mean, you know, you hear it go off, and next thing you see, somebody coming in in a full suit, you know, and it's impressive in that sense. Check it out.
Yeah. We, we give excellent service. I think there's no question about that. We should be proud of that. So, any other? Okay, miscellaneous. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Richland thing, but I'll let Amy talk about it.
And transportation?
Not, not much to say.
Well, we wanted to ask about-
Oh, great.
Actually, I, I have one on city services.
Okay, go ahead. Go for it.
Uh, the utility is under the bridge, Ray. Um, I saw in the paper, we have a utility support that's falling apart under the bridge, and the question is, whose utilities are it?
It's the university's utility bridge.
Okay.
And, uh, they're gonna put additional supports under that section, and they're gonna repair it.
Okay.
It's not, it's not our utility bridge.
Okay. So they're, they, it's their charge on that.
And they'll be paying Burgess and Nyquil?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's a plus.
Just wondering.
I mean, after this, it's kind of, I wanna make sure. Okay, Amy.
Oh, no wasting it.
Okay.
I'm the best for that.
Okay.
We talked about a truck two weeks ago, and I did my research, and it was a F-150 for the water maintenance supervisor.
Right.
And, uh, where they still are, do not have a dump truck, either in the water or the sewer department. Asking for one in the water department, so they could share it, probably. Uh, we're right now borrowing one-
Did we sell the other one?
We're borrowing, well, it's up, it, it'll be in the next auction, yes. Uh, the state purchase price on it is $43,112 for a one-ton, uh-
Yeah.
Which is what we need.
For wild. I mean, I would've put it on my agenda, Rick, but quite honestly, I'd heard from Jim that we were having our, um, that, it was about the, um, tap fees and where they were going, and they were all going into water. And I thought, "I'm not gonna spend money on a truck for wa-" And I misunderstood. We, we were having a telephone conversation.
The taps are going into, what we, what we changed the first of the year, I think, or soon thereafter, was red tag fees and all this was always going into water line. I switched it to go 50/50, because obviously you get the same people that are either a water or sewer employee doing the work and doing the red tags and doing the, the light fees, and I didn't think it was fair to water to get all the money. It's only 25,000, $30,000 a year, but still, it's, it's money.
It's a lot of money.
It's almost a-
Should be split.
It's almost a dump truck. I just didn't wanna be spending money that was righteous tap fees for the sewer fund for a water truck. That's all I was worried about.
No.
So we'll put that up for reading, Debbie.
Debbie asked me about it, and I said, "Put it on the agenda," but then I didn't know.
Okay. Um, any other miscellaneous?
Nope.
Okay. Amy, baby?
Uh, no, me.
Oh, okay, yeah, Carol. Okay.
Uh, Arts and Recreation Committee, I'd like to begin with just a few comments concerning the Arts and Recreation Board and the community center. The mayor has been working directly with the staff since Kevin Swartoff left. And so anytime you get a new person looking at things, it, it makes a difference. And certainly some good things are going on concerning arts parks and recreation. This weekend, the Wheels of Fire Skateboard Competition is taking place on the 29th. The soccer fields are ready to go and the youth soccer program registration is four hundred and thirty-seven kids. Excellent number. The pool reports are looking good. It looks like they came in on the positive side.
We, we crushed the hundred thousand dollar barrier for the first time at the pool.
Right. Um, the, the attendance was very big and so it's looking good.
Twenty-eight thousand or something.
Twenty-eight thousand.
As soon as we get the final chemical bills in and everything, I'll get a report and it'll be another one of those four or five years that Aaron's been compiling so you can kind of see where our capital is.
So a hundred and eight thousand income from the pool, but all the expenses are not in. The fall programs are excellent. The registration for all programs are up, so that's all looking good. And concerning Arts West, the new boilers are in the building, which should make a much more energy efficient fall. And the programs are, are going well. There are no dates available before December 20th. So that's basically what's going on in arts parks and recreation. And the next thing I put on my agenda is concerns signs in the right of way. This is an issue that came to Ray in terms of signs for Ohio University sporting events and the Copperheads baseball games. If you've noticed, we've had signs in the right of way on game days for those things. Right now, we don't have signs in the right of way. The signs, according to the sign ordinance, you can't put temporary signs in the right of way. So that's kind of what this came down to. And so the entities were informed that they weren't to put out the, the game day signs. I just passed you a letter from John Katuski. And in his request, he included the Copperheads because he felt that was an important community activity as well. And they're suggesting the possibility of it being a revocable license. I don't know if I feel that this is necessarily the answer, but I, I do feel that we need to find an answer to how to deal with these things. According to the sign ordinance, it's 230313, and I know that Amy knows it backward and forward. She's studied it recently. And I know the planning commission is planning on, planning on looking at the sound, the sign ordinance in its entirety. And this is something that could be discussed in that. However, we have an immediate problem with these entities wanting to put out their day of event signs. And I know Ray, jump in anytime you want to. I didn't feel it was appropriate just to give them the mayor's approval. And yes, you can put your signs out because it opens up a huge can, can of worms. So basically, we need a procedure to follow for such requests.
If basically right now, any, there are no temporary signs period permitted in the right of way. And we've attempted to enforce it on that basis.
Ray, Ray, can you get up to the microphone for the people out there?
At least the air conditioner's off and I can hear.
Right.
Well, it's people at home.
It's the people at home.
We've tried to, we've tried to enforce it consistently. And, you know, unfortunately, when you're consistent, sometimes there are some maybe consequences that some folks don't desire. And unfortunately, the Copperheads games and the OU games that were advertised in the right of way, there is no provision for any kind of an exception. So the only way there would be any kind of exception is a resolution or request for an exception or something on a, on a legal basis. Because I have no basis to allow them an exception.
Carol, we have usually handled right of way and revocable license issues under plan and development. Is there a reason that you have taken this up?
Because Ray emailed me and said, do you want to bring this up? It's something that was discussed at the Parks and Recreation Board. Because it concerned athletics. I, I also feel that we need to find, if nothing else, a temporary solution to this. My reading of the sign ordinance, it, it does say that any sign can be permitted by the mayor's discretion. So as far as a temporary agreement, it seems like that could be, that's in W, under prohibited uses. And at number five is public areas that signs can be permitted at the mayor's discretion. And the other thing that I found, oh, it says except in the downtown district. The downtown business district, so maybe some of them could be allowed.
In this case, if we were to allow the Copperheads or OU sports teams to use the right of way, why would we then refuse it to Athens High School?
Right. And that's the property.
The middle school.
Businesses and people who are having yard sales and.
Well, there'd be, there, yeah, there's a lot of other sporting events.
We have some of those.
Yeah?
Sprint sign.
Yeah.
I, I'm inclined to say, if the planning commission is going to be reviewing the sign ordinance, they should take this up in a comprehensive review of how we deal with signage. I don't feel like it's really our place to just out of the blue, you know, make an exception for one activity.
I'd have to agree. Is there, these are temporary signs in, in theory?
They are. They're just little taping things.
Technically, that's a temporary sign.
That is a temporary sign and I know-
And do we charge for temporary signs? I think we do, right? For any temporary signs? Are they anywhere near the cost of a fire, Ron?
They're allowed on private property with a permit, but they're not allowed in the right of way.
Okay.
And in the conversations I've had with Ray, we've talked about, well, if they were allowed, that there would be restrictions and he would put something together saying what type of sign it had to be, where it had to be, that it couldn't pose any danger and so on and so forth. And I agree with the concept that the planning commission should look at this. I'm looking at the consequence that these groups just are basically out of luck this year. If that's the approach that we take. And it does seem to me that there ought to be some other way that we could handle it to accommodate basically something that's been occurring for some time.
Okay, just wondering.
Jim, you know more about revocable licenses. Does this work?
Yeah, I think it would be a revocable license. But I, I don't think it's been happening that long, maybe, maybe two years. And I think we just weren't aware of, of the impact or the, yeah, the impact of allowing these opens the door to all these other requests. And if we give them a temporary, then I don't, I don't see how we can deny a temporary use to somebody else. So I would be inclined to approve a policy that would allow these, but I think it needs to be that general part of the sign ordinance.
And you'd have to tie it to something like tourism or, you know, because it's, you're expecting people from out of town. They need temporary signage, they wouldn't be able to help, you know, directional, et cetera, et cetera. But even then, you're, you're stretching. Ray and I have brainstormed on this and, you know, what kind of, just because you can't, to me, you can't just say, oh, it's only for nonprofits or it's only for this or that. Because one of the more recent requests we had was for small signs to go up by the League of Women Voters telling people when the debates are. Well, yes, you can do that on private property, but you cannot do it in the city right of way. Was the only thing we could respond to them with. Great, great, nice idea. Trying to get more people to, to those things at an awareness level. But you get lots of examples like that.
And why did these, these groups feel there was no place on private property that they could put their signs? Don't know.
Don't know.
Paul?
I assume it's just because there's more visibility on the right of way. I've seen these on the median islands on East State Street, on the median islands on Richland as well. Some are directional rather than just events orientated too.
Political signs show up the weekend before the election, all over the right of way.
But they should, they get torn down. They get blown up.
And you have to pay a deposit to click those up.
On Monday usually, but then the, you know.
The other question I have-
Well, we also have to pay those as well.
I notice occasionally when there is the general move-in, I notice that the, out on the Straightaway 50 there, there's the ODOT sign that has directional stuff. Do they have a formal arrangement with that? I assume ODOT has something, I, I guess the reason why I'm asking is, do they have a model of how they deal with a Department of Transportation signs that says, go to this entrance for OU? It's one of those big orange flashing generator things, so they must have some kind of arrangement with them. And what that looks like, we're going to make an arrangement with them, just as a model.
What I'm hearing from council is that there is not a desire on the part of council to try to do something to accommodate this immediately. Okay. The other thing that I would like to bring out up this evening is sort of introduction of the concept of percent for art program. I did email this document to you, so perhaps you got that. I also have a sample ordinance that I brought along this evening. I'm not asking for any kind of decision. What I, I'm asking for at this point is input as to what council's questions would be concerning the concept of a percent for art program. The ordinance goes beyond what we would need because it goes into the formation of a arts commission, which we already have, and how that is organized, that, that we have in a separate ordinance. But it does give a good, solid example of a percent for art ordinance. The concept is that when a project, a building project comes to the city, whether it be a capital project of the cities or a private entity, that the project put one percent of the total value of the project aside for art installation. And it, it allows parameters of what kind of art that would be. It's not, what I would refer to as motel room art. It's not something that you buy a hundred copies of and put them up in the rooms, but it is original art. And there is a procedure for that and, and that is outlined in the ordinance that you have. I can put together an ordinance that would be more specific to us before our next committee meeting. But the next time that Arts and Recreation is to be on the committee meetings is the end of October. And so that's why I'm bringing this to you now, so you've got the study information. The questions that I have immediately, one is, would we want to establish a base value where this percent for art kicks in? And what comes to mind to me would be a million dollars, which would be a ten thousand dollar art set aside. Now, the, the contractor would have some choices. If they had a strong idea of what they want in terms of the art within their building, they can present that as part of their plans. Or they could give the equivalent amount of money to an arts fund, which could then be used to place art at the city's will of anywhere in the, the city. Or use the funds for maintenance of already acquired arts projects. That answers one of the big questions, who maintains these things? And if they become the property of the city, then that maintenance cost indeed would be the city's. So that was one of the questions I had. Also, there's some good definitions in the sample ordinance that I passed out. So I think that I'll use those as a model. And if we, if we enacted something like this, then the, the arts commission would need to put together a handbook for developers of how to do this and, and how to work through, through the Ohio Arts Council to do it. An example would be, if we had had a percent for policy in place when the community center was built, the money could have in total paid for the fountain. That would be a possibility. It would fit the, the model. It is original art. It was contracted through the Ohio Arts Council. And so that would be an appropriate use. Ohio University is obligated under the state percent for art law to follow this procedure. And that's why we have the Maya Lynn area next to whatever that is, Grover.
Walter Hall.
Walter Hall, in front of Walter Hall, yes. And also the mosaic that's in the floor of the new Baker is original art. That was the Baker Center percent for art. So these are the types of projects that would be involved. And one of the things that all of the guidances that I've, I've read warns against is that you don't want the city or the state or the entity that provides such law to put some kind of artistic parameters on it. In other words, we don't want to dictate artistic taste. We want everything in the city to be this type of art. But rather have that part of the, the decision up to the individual contractor. Debbie?
I guess I see some differences in your draft policy compared to the sample ordinance that raised some questions for me.
Okay.
One is that in the sample ordinance, it's talking about where there's public money being spent on the project. So in, in that case, county money or development authority money, where you're just talking about anything, anyone who's applying to us for a permit.
But then that would become public money. If, if they said, okay, they have a four million dollar project, therefore they've got forty thousand dollars. They don't want to put the art in that particular project, so they give the forty thousand dollars to the art fund.
I'm just saying-
It then becomes public money.
The sample ordinance has- The sample ordinance has kind of a higher threshold of putting that requirement on somewhere, because there's public money going into the development, rather than just somebody applying for a permit. So I'd be curious to see whether other percent for art projects are just for everything that comes through, or if it's for projects that public dollars are going into building the project.
Okay. The answer to your question is, some are written one way, some are written the other.
Okay.
It could be written that it's just public projects, city projects. I personally would like to see it have the, the private projects as well.
And then the other question is, in the, in the sample ordinance, the money does go into a fund for public art. And we have now an arts commission.
Right.
And a process for commissioning and decommissioning public art. If a private project incorporates its own art, then they could decide to get rid of it, or sell it, or tear it down, and that would be at their own discretion? I mean, how does it become public if it's their own private thing that they do?
Because my understanding of how this works is that they have to do, have the art, commission the art, but it becomes the property of the city, and therefore becomes a part of those policies that we already have in terms of acquisition, decommissioning, all of that.
Okay.
Paul?
So this would, this would be actually a public art on private property, if, let's say they're doing something on their.
That's correct.
Is OU 1%? I thought it was a higher percentage.
I think maybe OU is 2%.
Okay. And did you get any feedback in terms of businesses on how they would feel about something like this?
I have not.
Okay. I could see them saying it's another.
Except that. We did bring this up at the Business and Arts Forum that was at Arts West about six weeks ago, and the, the people there were supportive of the idea. Now, there weren't contractors there, so.
That's beautiful.
And I'm sure that it was a sympathetic crowd, indeed. And certainly, the Chamber of Commerce will have interest in this. But if, we have a month before the time that we all look at the ordinance.
And a million dollars, you think is an appropriate cutoff?
Well, that was just fairly arbitrary to me. It just seemed to me like a million dollars. If it's a project below a million, then not to include it.
And the city would be also tied to this ordinance as well.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it excludes some things like highways and sewers and, and things like that. It wouldn't have to, but it, it does exclude things of a more utilitarian nature.
What's wrong with the mosaic on the highway?
Well, but, see, that's the thing. They don't have to put it in their own.
I know.
In the project. They could just contribute the funds to the arts fund. And interestingly enough, there are other arts policies in other communities that are per capita tax, and they, they put a per capita tax into the art fund yearly, and then the city decides on where to put the, the art. I feel that this percent for art approach works better because it does tend to put it out and about in, in the community. It has the approach that different entities are having input then. It broadens the base of the arts instead of an arts commission or a small group of people deciding where art should go and, and what it should be.
But shouldn't there be a, I haven't looked at the definitions of art, but shouldn't there be some general definition of art in there? I mean.
There will be.
Okay.
Yes, but it won't dictate taste. It won't say, in fitting with our theme of Athens hills, everything must have a hill in it, you know.
Well, no, I was thinking electronic signs could be artful, and toga could be artful, and, you know, what? Tags?
It, it does negate those things.
Okay. Just wondering.
Any other questions? I need the questions to put together the proposal.
Maybe you could give us a, a general statement over the last three years, what projects would have been susceptible to it?
Okay.
You know, so they're, you know, we may be talking about a relatively minor number of.
It would be a fairly.
Yeah, I mean, not minor to them, but.
Debbie could answer that better than I. How many major projects have we?
I'd have to look back.
Yeah.
Building permits over a million, Debbie. Walker, I bet, right? She's looking for it anyway, right?
Okay. Yes.
Having found myself somewhat responsible for a project that would probably qualify for this, I would ask such questions as, are you talking real estate cost? Because that can be a million right there.
Right. It does delineate that in the, in the sample.
Land improvement cost? Because that can be well over a million, getting it out of a floodplain. The infrastructure, bringing it to the place cost, that is several hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm quickly learning. You know, I mean, are all of those added into this? And then, while I certainly personally see the value of it, I can certainly imagine the owner's response to, and they're telling me, I've got to buy what? But, you know, in a town that is presently not regarded as one of the greatest places to develop right now, I can develop again. I can imagine that this would be one more thing that a developer would probably find objectionable.
I would agree that it's one more thing to deal with. Many communities do have percent for art policies.
Personally, I like it.
Yeah.
The federal government has it.
Right.
There are some beautiful mosaics and other things that you see when you walk into many of our beautiful buildings. I was in Columbus today, and just looking at the State Supreme Court building, Bart is, you know, a great joy. Walk into the Department of Health, and you'll see some beautiful pieces of art that was done probably in the 30s that probably make those buildings really special.
Right.
So personally, I like it, but, you know, there is the point that.
It's one more thing.
It's one more thing.
And I'm glad you mentioned the 30s, because that was the beginning of the percent for arts policies. It was in 1937.
The CBT stuff.
And there certainly are many buildings that you do get those experiences. And so I, I'd like to give it a shot. If you hate the idea, let me know. You don't have to let me know here publicly. If you don't want to, you can sneak a little message. But if, if people are fairly favorable to this, and we can draft something that's solid, I would like to move it forward.
Carolyn, to just dovetail what you were saying, if you go to some of our great national parks.
Right.
And see the WPA art that has been left, it really is remarkable, remarkable things now. Yeah, it would be a way of creating some things that generally are very lasting in nature.
I'll just, I'll just say, I don't hate it. I really don't like it, and I'm not sure I could support the idea, given other, other things that are going on. Shade tree ordinance, we're still having trouble forcing that, so I'm just not sure I'm ready to add that one more thing.
I will add that I feel that the landscaping ordinance is one of the best things that have happened to our city while I've been on council. And yes, it costs developers a bit more, but every time I go to Lowe's, I think, what a beautiful parking lot that is. And as the trees mature, it certainly changes the feel of going to that big box store. And I, I just think that sometimes things that, that cluster developers, developers a little bit are the things that are the, the most meaningful to our community. Paul?
It would be, that you bring that up, would be interesting to find out what the cost, percentage of course of our landscape, the landscaping ordinance is in comparison to what you're talking about.
Okay.
Not to beat on the landscaping ordinance, but at the same time, I think it has a good effect. I go to Lowe's, and I see everybody trying to hide under those little trees right now in the shade, so it's, you know, as they get bushier, we hopefully.
They can hide under a statue.
Yeah, yeah, or fountain. But it's, it's, I'm not sure. I'd, I'd like to hear what the business, a lot of the business people think. Again, you said you had a meeting, but you're obscured in that sense, because it is another who. I like the idea, but again, I don't know how many of these things would fall into the mix.
It would be more the contractors of future businesses than current businesses. They'd probably be, oh, sure, charge those other people. But certainly, from a development standpoint, it's, it's a question.
As long as we're talking about this in terms of impact on developers and development, this is not so much specific to this, but we've kicked around the idea of, you know, trying to incentivize some things that we wish to encourage, you know? Could we build in incentives for energy efficiency or for including low-income units? And to me, this seems like the similar kind of thing, like there are public goods and things that we, we would like to encourage in the, in the city as new projects come forward. And I'd like us to figure out how to do that in a comprehensive systemic way, so that the, the process is clear, and we don't necessarily have these little bits of regulations all over the place. So I hope that we can, you know, work with Ray, and at some point, work with a planner on, you know, because Ray has provided some stuff to us about more unified development code systems. And I, I would just hope that we incorporate this clearly into the overall process, so that it's not something else that pops up when a developer is three-fourths of the way through the process. Somebody says, oh, by the way, there's this other thing.
You need a statue.
In that consideration, is this something that should be sunsetted, so we don't, we have a certain time period, so, or check it at some, you know, some kind of mechanism we look at later down the line? What? It'd have to pass, I know. And then somebody has to go build a million dollar project. Okay.
And we could pass it just for public.
Yeah.
Projects.
Hmm.
And exempt the commercial projects. Okay.
Well, I like what Debbie's talking about in terms of the, the whole incentive in a package. I've been on discussions with that in terms of, you know, the, the parking requirements, the landscape requirements are always up to consolidation is one thing we always talk about at the tree commission, because it's, sometimes you just can't put them everywhere you're supposed to according to the ordinance. So there's flexibility in the tree commission, at least. There's something to think about.
I have no miscellaneous, so if no one else does, I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thank you. I just have three quick miscellaneous. That wasn't my week to go, but I just wanted to get these out there. Tomorrow, the Richland 682 Advisory Committee is meeting at 1:00 tomorrow. I got the agenda, but the only thing that I read as I was going out the door was that we would determine when the first public meeting would be, as a result of that meeting tomorrow. There were some other things on the agenda. I can't speak to them because I just wrote number six. But it was determining when the first public meeting should be, so anyone who is ready and willing to give their input will be ready. Again, that's tomorrow. And then also, I'm meeting with John Katuski in regards to the pedestrian safety subcommittee. It's my understanding that the university is urging him to do something with pedestrian safety. And he knew that I was going to be starting a pedestrian safety subcommittee very soon as a mimic of the bicycle safety subcommittee. And we're meeting tomorrow. I'm not entirely sure what we'll be determining tomorrow. I'm going to go ahead with the pedestrian safety subcommittee. I just imagine the university is going to do their best to be a part of it. And lastly, the bicycle safety subcommittee, we are going to be meeting on a regular day every month. That's going to be the fourth Monday of every month at 5:30 before council. So it's going to be 5:30 every fourth Monday. I realize today's the fourth Monday. However, I don't have my laptop, because it doesn't have a hard drive, and I don't have my email list, so I'll be emailing everyone later on this week, once I get that back. But again, fourth Monday at 5:30. Pedestrian safety subcommittee, I'll determine when that meeting day and time is after, after I meet with John tomorrow, and then go from there.
I would just encourage you on the pedestrian safety to be sure to reach out to folks who've brought those issues to our attention over the years. So I know the Near East side group.
They've all been noted.
Has already created a little traffic calming plan for the neighborhood.
Right, yeah. And I was there for that. And I've been talking with Chris in, in terms of linking up with that and making that a part of this focus. So, thank you. Paul?
So part of this subcommittee, pedestrian subcommittee, will be looking at Richland in general, or everywhere?
No, no, everywhere. That's just, just like the bicycle safety subcommittee sort of began, because people became energized about the issue, so it was a good time to start it. Same with the pedestrian safety subcommittee, with the Richland Avenue 682 project taking off and that being a pedestrian area, that's just one of the things sort of promoting, like, and getting people energetic about being involved with a safety subcommittee, knowing that their involvement will be put to good, put to good use.
One aspect of it we should look at is also the condition of sidewalks with pedestrian side of the stuff. I mean, make sure we're always, we had, the comprehensive plan talked about that.
We'll be covering everything, just like we do with the bicycle safety subcommittee. We compiled a bunch of things that we were interested in focusing on, made a mission statement, you know, and went from there.
Okay.
So something that we'll be doing.
Okay.
I mean, I think that we've been very successful with bicycle safety subcommittee, so I'm anticipating that same success with pedestrian safety subcommittee. And I'm going to call it something short, so I'll keep saying pedestrian safety subcommittee. Nancy?
Well, I was wondering if we could possibly amend the Richland Avenue Improvements Project planning, planning phase, and reduce the amount of money we're committing to this by $100,000, and take that other $100,000 and put it into the already existing safety issues that are around the city that our citizens have studied, the east side, the north side, the speed bumps. I mean, I, I looked it over, and I'm happy to, to see it. I, you know, the first time it came up, I was totally clueless about what was going on. And it seems to be, as I read the one that we have in front of us, an area, I mean, dedicated to the area almost exclusively between potentially the summit and perhaps West Green Drive, if we're lucky. And it's primarily in that corridor, the 200,000, there's a lot of, I mean, could we cut back on the Danish and the coffee and the number of meetings and kind of go down to, I mean, engineers are expensive, do we really need to have all those meetings? Can we put in some speed bumps? Could we put in some traffic calming devices instead of, I mean, we had those, I mean, people have come to us and said they have problems in their neighborhood. And, you know, I know that we had a very dramatic drunk-driving episode on Richland Avenue, but does it really warrant it? I mean, when it's all done, is it going to look anything different from what it looks like today? I mean, it's just going to be a corridor that's not very attractive at the best of times. And so I think several of us have thought that we might want to amend it, reduce the amount of money we're committing to the study, the study to the study, I mean, the preliminary study, and cut out some of the meetings. I mean, why have all those meetings? What will happen is the people will be there only when we have something on the agenda, and we'll hear it then. I mean, it just seems like there's just a protracted number of meetings.
Which means.
And all of them. I mean, I read the whole thing, landscaping, for example. The tree commission already does task 11. And, you know, I personally think that we don't need to, to look and see if there's a problem at the crossing beyond West Green Drive up the hill. We know there's a problem. I mean, let's get a temporary solution. Because we don't even know what the access point is going to be to the new student center. I mean, after they put the new access road in, if they do, they're going to take out most of the parking that's available, you know? So where are they going to park? On top of the, you know, that sewer thing they're making right now? Who knows? I mean, we clearly are, are in a position to have lots of meetings, but I don't know what's going to come of it. Meanwhile, on Congress Street, the speed bump is broken. By Highland Park, there are issues that people have brought to our attention. On Cable Lane, there are issues. On the east side, there are issues. We've heard about them. I mean, it's like, the people came and talked to us, and nothing has happened. So I'd like to, you know, if we have money to spend on something like this, let's cut the Danish and go toward, and coffee, and, you know, cut the number of times the engineers come down. I mean, they can only do so much with it. It's a silk purse, a sous vide type of situation. It isn't that attractive. It'll never be that attractive. And, you know, six lanes of traffic? Give me a break. On the bridge? I mean, let's just say, okay, how about if we structure, become a green city, and structure departure and arrivals on 15-minute intervals? I mean, you could do that, and you wouldn't have to. I mean, you could do that and you wouldn't have to widen the Doggone Bridge. I mean, it's just, you know, we're going back to the same old stuff. Possible, it's probably not probable, but it's possible. You could say some places, 7:45, 8:00, 8:15. All of a sudden, there's no traffic jam. You could also say quarter to five, five o'clock, 5:15, no traffic jam. You don't need another lane. I mean, the other part of it is, we're going to postpone, and I know, I remember when they did the, the, the bridge study, that this is one that needed some attention, not the one that's above it, not the one that crosses just below Mulberry Street going down. But this one needs attention. And so how much time are we adding to this is my question. And I'd like, I guess that that's basically a summarize, things I've heard from other people. Some people want more study, but, you know, what are we going to do? I thought those university courtyard doesn't even pay its fire fees. I mean, we're going to pay to have studies so they can have better traffic? I thought they were taking the bus. I mean, you know, let's get the safety things done first that we know about and cut out the meetings.
Okay.
What, don't say, okay, I want a solution.
I told you that this was not my week. I just was announcing these meetings. We're meeting...
Yeah, I know. You know, I mean, we didn't get this until last week.
You'll never make that mistake again.
But we are being asked to pay for this.
Yeah, we are being asked to pay money, real money.
But we haven't paid for anything yet.
But, but we have other projects up there.
Task 11, what other tasks do you want cut out? What other ones aren't important to the study?
Well, I don't know if they're important or not. I think you could just put a stop sign in.
Well, that's what we don't, that's what we're trying to determine.
Well, there's no stu, I mean, there's a minor kind of study going on.
I don't know, what do you think about engineering, other than the reports we're calling?
Well, it's not all engineering. A lot of it is planning. We're spending as much money for this as we spent on our comprehensive plan, which we haven't even implemented yet practically. I mean, you know, and it's going to be big pricey meetings and I don't see what's going to come of it. Stakeholders, you know, I mean, it's just another way to use time, I suppose, but, you know, scenarios. Everybody's going to draw on a map. You know, it's like, yes, it's still going to be the Richland Avenue corridor. It's going to look the same doggone way it does now. I mean, if there's a rotary, it'll look better maybe or different, but why are we spending so much money on this study? You were there, Amy, I wasn't. I just want to know. I mean, when we had all these...
I read the reports. That's what I did. I reviewed and graded.
If I may, if we, if we cut it back to 100,000, we can do it for that. And we'll get the same whole project we've gotten for the last 10 years. So that's no problem.
Would we have the traffic calming devices in the neighborhoods with the other 100,000?
I can't guarantee that.
Well, that's a problem, I guess.
No.
Because, I mean, the people have asked for them for years.
Well, but when you go to the meeting of the Cable Lane folks, because we've held, held the meetings and say, oh, well, we can do this, how many, you could never get them to agree. You know, and when you go almost everywhere on it, there is not overall agreement by the property owners of it. And one of the things we said, and we established in the meeting with Congress Street people, what, three or four years ago, was that we had this standard saying, I want at least a percentage, and we talked about it, to say the people that agree that they want that in their neighborhood, that's the only one we've got. And we've used the same standard every time.
Well, they were, no, I don't know that it was the same standard. In that one, you made them measure the traffic flows and it's broken.
Mm-hmm.
It needs to be replaced, Congress Street. It is broken, it was temporary, it needs to be replaced.
It was $15,000 for that and we knew it would break eventually, yeah.
But, I mean, it's broken now.
But I mean, that's going to be the cost factor.
But the problem is that we have problems out there that we know about and we're sort of going on to this new idea, the whole set of new ideas. And it seems like it's, although it may be potentially wonderful, it's going to be further down the road and there are safety issues that I'd like to see resolved sooner rather than later. I don't know that ODOT, maybe the ODOT money will help me out.
Well, I, I would suggest then that council designate $100,000 to be spent on the neighborhood safety solutions.
That's exactly what I was proposing to do with the amendment. But, you know, I don't know that having a bunch of meetings will necessarily solve the problem. And I don't know if you've met with those neighbors beyond this. I haven't heard anything. They're just keep saying to me, well, what are we, when are they going to do something? Well, I don't know when they're going to do something. So maybe we put the 100,000 in there. I mean, we have relatively scarce resources and I just think this is a lot of money for. Joe?
Some of the things that folks in the Near East side have proposed are not things that really take money. I mean, some of the things they proposed are, you know, considering having parking on both sides of Morris so that it's not such a long, wide, you know, straight shot that people speed on when there are a lot of young children living there. So, you know, looking at, at things that could be done in, in how, how the street is arranged that could have the effect of calming traffic. So, you know, I, I do know that people have, you know, worked on that, had community meetings, put together a plan, had meetings with Andy. And, you know, I, I don't think that all of the things are expensive things.
Well, you know, I think if we, if we want to accomplish those things and we put the money, money behind it and bring the plans in and, and we'll go over and, and I'll approve or disapprove.
Well, you probably weren't here when they came and talked. I don't know if you watched it on TV, but I don't know if anybody's followed up on that.
Well, I know they've never given me a copy of the plans. I can attest to that.
I got a, a draft copy from Debbie.
Mm-hmm.
It's the only input I've had from anybody.
And when we were on...
I mean, I take that back. I've talked to a couple of specific people, but...
And they gave a petition for the other, and then of course, the Highland Park area is a different one and those people were in and they were promised years ago. I mean, I can go back and read the meetings of the executive committee where you guys were working on a plan. I mean, that's what it says every month. I mean, the mayor reported that you, that Andy Stone was working on a plan. And, you know, it's, nothing's there yet.
Well, and that's part of the limited resources. I mean, staffing is an issue. I mean, we can only do so much. And you're maintaining 90 miles of streets with Andy right now and, you know, supervising 12 people. And he doesn't have time to be a full-time engineer to do all of those things. And then, you know, it's allocation of time.
That's exactly what the amendment...
It means easy to administer and think of it, but it's tougher when you have to do it.
That's exactly what we're talking about, allocation of resources and time.
Right. Well, we don't have the money.
So are you...
Resource money.
So are you talking about a reduction of the study area or just a reduction of the tasks?
The study area is already reduced. If you read it, almost everything is between Schaefer Street and the two new housing projects as I see it. There are only a couple of things that go beyond that. Isn't that correct?
I'm just looking at the first, second bullet there saying study area will be between...
Right, but then you look at the actions further on.
It's all down at the bottom.
It's all down at the bottom. It's between basically where the major traffic flows out of the university to where the two housing developments are. That's where, I mean, at least, you know, a couple of places I'll grant you, it says West Green Drive and another place it says they'll worry about the traffic crossing, which was a problem already. We, we know it. We know there's a problem there with the designed crosswalks that aren't crosswalks. I mean, all right, here's two options. Let's consider, how about a speed bump on either side and make people, or make people stop? Those aren't going to cost a bundle of money. They aren't going to, people won't like it. But the question is, you know, can we keep, can we justify having those things that look like crosswalks and aren't really crosswalks? Let's just bite the bullet and solve the problem and make them a crosswalk. The same thing could be said by the area in front of Bentley. Five years, six years. I mean, I guess I'm at the point where I'm really asking, can we do something about that safety issue? Highland Park, east side, I mean, those are places where there are minor little tweaks that could help.
Paul?
Has Ohio University been in this discussion?
Yes.
Yep.
Any chance of them partnering with the cost?
Yeah.
Good question.
Well, but this is a different issue. They won't, but, I mean, it seems to me that most of the properties involved far more impact Ohio University than the general city of Athens. It's, it's a spot of a lot of their focus in terms of the master plan. And it, it seems to me that if we want to have a more comprehensive study in something beyond meat and potatoes solution, that, that maybe they should be partnering with us to do that.
We've been attempting to do that.
Attempted more.
You know, and as you, as you know as well as I do, Richland Avenue is a key arterial right now for the city. So it's worthy of attention, so...
I agree it's worthy of attention and it's worthy of having it looked at from a holistic point instead of just, oh, why don't we do this or why don't we do that? But I sure would like to see Ohio University have more of a vested interest, I mean, they do have a vested interest, but put cash behind that vested interest and partner with us to come up with solutions. There, they have a great deal of language concerning Ohio Univers, or Richland Avenue in the master plan and some of it isn't very considerate to city uses. And that's why I think it's really important to have them involved in the process.
My manager.
One of the aspects, I'm worried about this, of course, is that we have two different projects going on. We're doing a study where we may end up with an entrance at the bottom of one Richland Avenue bridge for the student center. And then we may have this development, a coast run, which will affect the other side of this intersection. So our, I, I know it'd be nice to plan all this stuff, but we don't even know which one's going to happen first, how it's going to look in some sense. We haven't decided to give right away for the sub-coast run. And the, they don't even know what kind of entrance egress or ingress it is going to be for the student center.
Right.
And it would be nice if they are going to tell us something like that before we do a study like that. I know I've heard concerns about trying to look at more of the traffic flow to the south of this 682 intersection as well, going past Derry Lane and the entire corridor, which of course is a difficult call because of the constraints.
Yeah, the key thing we were trying to do differently this time actually was to involve the public upfront in the design process and decisions to be made before the designs are finalized. But it's must, it's much less expensive and more expeditious to just do an engineering design and don't get involved in all of the public discussion, so...
I also think that it's possible for us to do public input processes early on, ahead of giving guidance to engineers, without having engineers, you know, come here and bill at whatever rates they bill to conduct public meetings. You know, I mean, we can do some of that in-house and, and I think we've done it really well in, in some instances. So, I mean, I, I don't want to hold it out as some kind of either or situation. You know, I, I think that we can try to get some of that input.
Well, I think though, that when you become the input person for it, those receiving that input are not, are receiving it from your perception of what you received, rather than being directly there and receiving it from the public. We are public representatives, we're elected by the public, but I know that there's people that will say, oh, the mayor has favored that to where he wants it to go rather than where I was telling it. And maybe I, because you do hear all of those different things that are, that are there at a public meeting. And if you're staying to your design people, don't come to any public meetings because I don't want to pay you for it. I'll tell you about it later and now you'll bill me for that time, but it'll be a lot less. It's, you know, I guess it's the Cadillac and the Chevrolet and everything else.
So we've tried...
We've designed it, you know, closely to, I mean, and part of the reason is that we have time in this instance. When we had the Union Street Bridge problems, we didn't have any time. We had a bridge that was being shut down because of, it was moving. Here, we know that ODOT isn't going to fund this until, at the earliest, ODOT. And everything I'm reading out of the state of Ohio right now is, if you've got a project online, be prepared to wait. Because we were set up with the bike path project that could have been under construction this year, a year ago, and we planned the engineering, we did it. It's been sitting there for eight months now. And it hasn't even moved to central office because they don't have the money to fund it yet. And so they've moved it back another year. And ODOT's doing that. Look what they've done in Nelsonville. You know, everything, all of those things are getting shoved backwards. And you can see it just reading the dispatch of the 7071 and all the other things that are going on.
I was at a meeting, they said that they're, they're going to have budgetary problems for ODOT. Four years, five years?
So true.
Expect the whole thing to be down to 1.5 billion, I think they said.
Well, okay, we'll talk about an amendment. That, I mean, we'll at least explore it. I mean, like I said, it was in my week. Just wanted to make these announcements. We have a meeting tomorrow, on the Moore tomorrow, meet with Andy, talk to Ray, we'll explore an amendment.
Turn them upside down.
Get rid of the donuts at the meetings, whatever.
Yep.
Danish. Whatever. Coffee, just whatever. So we'll look at it.
Don't smile.
Most we can do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm done, there's no other...